All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole. First item is to approve the agenda. This item which has come to us is just actually the report, I need to see, the Watership Protection Plan. So with that, motion to add to the agenda.
Move.
Second. Those in favor, motion carried. Then what we have obviously is an election. We have Stuart back there. Stuart, if you take the podium, welcome. And you're here to present on behalf of your company for supporting the Marina Enhancement Project.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for having me here today.
Forwarding back.
Okay. And bear with me with the presentation slides and see how that goes. I would like to just let everyone in the council know, I think there's quite a few of you that I do know, I've known over the years, however, I'd like to explain to you a little bit about what's happening at Comms Adventure and where we've come from and some history about the company. Oh, there we go. Okay, it's working. So we have a family company. The company, Comms Adventure, has been in operation for 28 years now, which is a shock to me. And I have been a part of it and we've been in this location in the marina for this next season will be 19 years. Again, it's a family company, so my brother and I now run the company and my father, James, and I, who started the sailing portion of this company together, he is working on retirement. When we started Comms Adventure, it was through the Comox Recreation Commission and the facility that you now see down there, part of it was built by a Rotary Club, this small building. And the first year that we were operating the company down there, there was 85 students for the summer program that we had. And over the years, there's been a lot of changes in programming and we found that the need was growing for more community water sports, so Comms Adventure grew. And now, the way it is now, we now have over 4,500 visits a season. But that is out of the same facility that started with 85 students, which is pretty amazing. So where is Comms Adventure now? Our structure for the company is based on two key areas to start with, and that's our community water sports programs, which are based, we're now the Town of Comox Recreation Department. And you can see there's some numbers there for annual visits. Yes, some of those visits are repeat visits. And the other side of our key areas are the School District 71 and further programs, as far as School District 60 and even as far away as the Yukon Territory, they visit our programs here. That makes up the bulk of the company's visits. And from that grassroots area, the company also does long-term athlete development. And our programs in both stand-up paddling and in sailing are very well-recognized throughout those communities and are growing in numbers as the year is going. The other side of things we do is events. So we offer, you may have heard of some of the events, like the actual town has supported the Canadian Waterman Festival that happens here, bringing people from all over Canada and the United States to come to take advantage of the racing area we have in a beautiful bay out here in the bay. And also, we have racing programs and regattas that are internationally recognized. Sailors come for up to North American level racing here and away from our academy programs to regular areas. So in this slide, this represents where we would like to see the visits go to, where we would see with the proposed facility improvements that we could, that are being proposed for down in the marina, we could see this happen as soon as the 20th year of operation, which would be 2017, and we'd be upwards of 7,000 visits to that small marina facility. In the red areas on this little slide here, we can see, this is areas where we can see extra growth, where there's not a lot of focus in the company at the moment, but there, all these areas do exist. You can see over at the special events is the Waterman Festival. We have been asked to run the North American Hobie Cat Championships, as well as some more modern sailing events that are a little bit more specific with new equipment that's on the cutting edge of sailing. Some of the other existing events that we run that have helped bring our experience levels up to offer these events in the community are events like the Red Bull Around the Straits Race that we run in Vancouver for Red Bull Canada, the Vancouver Island Stand-Up Paddle Series, which is now, this next season will be its 10th year of stand-up paddling. Yes, it's been going on that long, stand-up paddling. You may have also seen the weekly events that happen with the Downtown Business Association, the Tuesday Evening Paddle. I know that some of you have had to partake in that fun event where we bring lots of different groups together to come and experience the beautiful new marina environment and to just bring like-minded people together, as well as community supporters, different businesses come and support the barbecue that the Ocean Racing Association runs and that they receive the proceeds from that. That, we found this to be a really beneficial partnership with the BIA. So we can see that the facility started with 85 students and now we're looking towards having up to 7,000 visits per year. And imagine what the possibilities of this facility could be with the growth of perhaps the next stage in this proposed development. As we said, that we're a very community-oriented business and we believe that the success of the business has come from the cultivation of community partners. And the number one partner that we have is the Town of Comox. We wouldn't be able to do any of the programs that we offer without the support of the town and through the Comox Recreation Center, where the majority of our participants come from, as well as the School District 71. You may or may not know that now almost all of the schools in Comox have partake in our Sail Safe Program, which includes a water-safety-based portion, as well as a six-session certificate program that we designed here in the valley for sailing. And that is now spread to the full Comox Valley. Many of the schools come out to take part. It's a very affordable program. It is also supported by the Jump Start in kids' sport for those that, the schools that can't afford to come. Some of the other partners that work through our programs are the Downtown Business Association with the Frequency Events, Aboriginal Sport EC through the local Comox Band, and a new association called Get On Board has helped create some new programs that offer Aboriginal opportunities to do water sports, which in a lot of times is inaccessible for them. So that's been an incredible new program. Our international visits through our summer camps have grown a lot. Now we've seen, not only through Canada, Alberta, back east, grandparents, kids visiting and returning, we also now see kids from the Middle East, from Saudi Arabia, Dubai, South Africa, Europe, and these are returning clients that keep coming back once they see these amazing and unique programs that are offered. As far as we know, all of the summer programs that we offer, like our kids' camps, where you may have seen some of the things behind us, the sailors are out there right now, actually, heading out towards the end of Goose Pit, where there's the inflatable park that the kids get to enjoy, as well as kayaking, stand-up paddling, and of course, the catamaran sailboats you see out there every day. Those programs are unique to the country and in fact, to North America. So it's quite a special program that we offer here, and I think that's where we're seeing those international visits and returns. And that's the area in red from the slide before where we would see growth. Special events, we talked about the Waterman Festival. Also, we do regional to international sailing gaddas. And the newest one, which was very exciting for us this year, was the Comms Adventure Gauntlet, which ran during multiple days. If any of you saw that, you would have seen Councillor Arnott's performance in the giant stand-up paddleboard race. So yes, there's eight people on board and they race in the marina while thousands of people are watching. And we commentate the event and there's an obstacle course. It's basically the, like Tough Mudder on the Water, I guess.
Somebody had taken a drone footage of that.
There is some drone footage and it was posted online and it was amazing to see that marina shot with all those people and, you know, kind of what we could see, the potential of the area and how it's such a gem that we have down at the waterfront. We realized, how about we be down there? Then the other part of our business is the Ocean Racing Academy, and that's the kids that you see out there toughening out the cold weather we have right now. They sail in a year-round training program. And our academy encompasses the stand-up paddling world, which amazingly enough, there is racing world all over the world now, it's the fastest-growing water sport in the world, as well as catamaran sailing, which is the new standard for training in sailing with the America's Cup being now catamarans. And we have the most successful training program in the country. We have national titles from both sports this last year. So I know that some of our athletes have been recognized at council as well, and we're very proud of where we're able to come from with such a small facility and in a great community. All right. I just want to like to say that I hope that this has given you a bit of information about where Comms Adventure is and where we came from, and that on behalf of Comms Adventure, we would like to offer our support for the Marina Enhancement Project. And to thank the council and the mayor for your support in continuing to help us improve the quality of life for the residents in this area, in the Comox Valley, through these different programs. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Stuart on this time? Councillor Ken?
Yes, Stuart, I just want to compliment your company on three things. First of all, the affordable school programs, I really think you should be commended for that, making it affordable for all kids, and that you've reached every school in the district and found a way to make that happen. Hats off to you, that's wonderful to hear. I also compliment you on your community programs, particularly the Tuesday Night Paddles, which introduces people that maybe have not had an introduction to different forms of paddling or sailing for the first time. And I think that's a great community thing, to bring community together down at the waterfront. And I might have participated in that, but I've seen it grow and it's a great thing for the Ocean Racing Association as well. But my question though is that with you, you mentioned you're excited about the Marina Enhancement Program. And do you, how do you see yourself fitting in or continuing to fit in as a company in our marina?
Well, thank you for your encouragement with those programs that we're offering. When it comes to the marina, we do feel like we're a community part of that, the marina that's happening, the enhancement that's happening. We have been consulted as a stakeholder throughout the process and we feel like we've been well-heard. And as the first stage of this project happens, we're interested to see how we fit into the plan. And I know that if it is to go ahead, there will be some disturbance when it comes to construction, and that's something that we're looking forward to working with the town staff and council about and the developers on how we can continue to run these great programs while that's going on. The benefit of having that new facility, I think we can agree, will be definitely worth the short-term inconvenience, and I'm sure we can work together and make that not as much of an inconvenience.
All right, Councillor Grant.
Thank you very much. That was a great, great presentation. Thanks to that, Stuart. And I had no idea, I always knew that you provided a great dimension to our waterfront, but I had no idea to extend it. And I don't have a question, I only have a comment. And this is a firsthand report coming from my granddaughter, who attended one of your classes. And I said, "Oh, good, how was it? Hadn't you enjoyed?" And all of those wonderful grandmother questions, to which she said, "It sure is crowded, but gosh, Stuart made it fun for us."
Well, that's very nice to hear. Thank you.
All right. No more questions, I don't think. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item of the agenda. There's no minutes of meetings or departmental reports, we have another staff reports. And the first one is regarding the Macklang Territory House Committee, draft terms of reference. So there is recommendation there, a motion to receive a report first.
Move, we see.
Second, in favor, motion carried. And staff have provided a terms of reference, so we could move that and discuss it if you wish. Or you can ask questions before we move that. What's your preference?
I just, I have a suggestion, so do we need to move it first?
Oh, we can move it and we can certainly make some suggestions around the terms of reference you have.
Okay, so I'll move that then.
Second.
Okay, so discussion, go ahead, Councillor Ken.
Generally, I'm quite pleased with the way this is shaping up and it'll be nice to get this area of the town organized by me at last. It's been a long time coming. My suggestion about the composition of the advisory committee would be, though, I would suggest that we consider including one member of MLHS and one member from the museum and one member from the Stream Keepers Group, because they've all worked so hard in the area and the creek. And I believe including these groups gives us a strong and broad wealth of knowledge, not only of Macklang, but also of the natural environment.
So you're saying the same number of people, but just slightly different.
Well, it would be one more person, in fact.
Okay.
Rather than two from Macklang, have one from Macklang and one from museum, and then an additional one from the Stream Keepers.
Okay. So I guess the only issue that that could make you an even number, it makes it a possibility for tires. Now, we do have two community members at large, we could simply say one member of the community at large, I guess with or without urban construction knowledge and experience. We could leave that open. If you've got those other Stream Keepers in there, maybe we don't need so-called at-large member that is just that person, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. I've been speaking to a guy that, he's got a lot of building experience, I think that may be where this comes from, that's showing real interest in this, and you know, he's been down, he's looked through the house, and he's kind of got some, he's got some, and he's very qualified for this kind of stuff. So that's, I think that's where that one came from.
Okay, that's fine, we can leave it that way too. It just would be better, I think, to have an uneven number generally.
Well, I just, I just thought it would be important to, because I know the museums done some work with that about Macklang, and also the Stream Keepers are down there and they've done a great job with the creek. So I think we're going to be moving eventually to a bigger concept and whole car, so it'd be nice to get them in on the ground level.
And we could also clarify that the staff members really, they're just a liaison.
Yeah, it's more of a technical role.
Certainly, I'm already positioned.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
So does that get us to an uneven number?
More or less. So that could be a motion to amend the terms of reference, but we could deal with other ones all as a package, I suppose. Were there other concerns? The one I had was terms of the goals. This, I think, is an important point in that not only should be the committee reviewing the terms of the will, but of course, the will just dealt with the money. We should probably have them review the terms of the transfer document when it was transferred about 10 years prior to his death, which had conditions in there about use and so on. So the will and the view of transfer, I think there's a life estate that he has given him. And again, there were terms in the, in that document which specified how the property was to be used, because the will just basically deals with the money.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Any other questions or comments on the terms of reference? So with those two changes, I guess.
Sorry, the one thing I noticed after producing this was I didn't put an end date.
Sunset clause. That's a good idea.
You better have one below, isn't it?
So the anticipation would be that they would report back within some limited time. What would you suggest, six months, four months?
I think six months, five months. At that point, they can always ask if there is a need for an extension.
Okay, so we'd say six months from when it's passed by council, which would be, assuming this passes as a law.
And with your, I'll start.
The group wouldn't actually form until after.
Six months from its first meeting or something?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough, because we've got to advertise.
And so with your talking about the transfer document, would they actually get into some of the notions of what would happen if some of those things couldn't be fulfilled or where we could go from there?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, some of those things.
They just need to review the whole thing. There are limitations on the use of the property already, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Obviously, whatever they propose has to be consistent with that.
Okay, so there'd be some proposal. Okay, that's fair enough. Good.
All right. So basically, a six-month opportunity there from the date of its first meeting, and reviewing the terms of the transfer document as well as the will, and then membership, which would be up to two members of council, one member of Macklang Heritage Society, one member of the Brooklyn Stream Keepers Association, I think that's what it's called, one member of the Comox Museum and Orchids, and then one member of the community at large, do you want to put with relevant construction knowledge experience? Does that, I mean, that might be an attribute that would be useful, but do you want that specific? I guess that's it, Councillor. Yeah, good.
I think that's good, and we've still got the one member of the community at large with or without.
Yes. Yes, you're right. We'd leave those all as is. So with all those amendments, is there somebody who wants to move that as a package?
I'll move that.
Second.
Further discussion? If you have any, those in favor, motion carried.
Are we going to select our council members or when will we do a council member, one member?
Oh, good idea. I guess we do that at next meeting, when it gets adopted by council.
One other question, maybe I should ask this before, when we're doing two council members, are we doing one council member and one backup in case they can't go, or we actually have two sitting on that?
I think we'd have two.
Two sitting there?
Okay. So we can, once this is adopted by council presumably next week, we can do some arm twisting and see who wants to do it.
Well, actually, I think.
I'll be in wait.
I believe we necessarily would like to sit on it, so there you go.
No, I'm sure there will be support.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, and so that deals with that. And you believe there wasn't anything else you needed to say?
Nope.
So the next item is a motion to receive a third quarter financial statement report.
Move.
Second. Received that, all in favor, motion carried. Any questions or comments, if your finances have given us a good update? Generally, good news overall. Although, as he has pointed out, some of the positive aspects, sorry, because we haven't spent money on projects, as I mentioned, so. Council Road upgrades and the marina waterfront.
Yeah, a good example.
See if we can make progress on those in next year. All right, so we've moved to receive that, nothing further required that we would do. So that moves us to, do you have any additions?
Yep.
So this is the time here generally, we bring, the staff bring forward recommendations initially as we start with budget process, looking initially at several utility rates, so that's water sewer and waste collection and disposable, disposal, sorry, paid for by user fees. So that is there for consideration and staff have recommended that the bylaws be brought forward to council for second and third.
So I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, so discussion, and you can see from the memo that there's no increased plan for the flat rate for water, slight increase for the meter grade, $6 more for solid waste, and instead of a sewer increase of $27, it's looking at $21. So overall, slightly better than last year. I'll just give you a quick update, I was at a meeting of the MMDC Advisor Committee on Monday, and it's probably nothing that we can rely on for next year's budget, but there is going to be a presentation put together for the Minister of Environment to encourage full coverage in that program, which, see where that goes. Essentially, what we have is a situation where the newspaper industry is still on side of this program, and not blaming the newspapers, because there's still one here, but they are still resisting the, the, the including that system, so it creates a bit of a financial issue for MMDC. But we think there's some ways to get everyone on side, so we're working on a presentation to the Minister of Environment for January. So probably won't be any changes for next year for Comox, but I was also told that the mayors from the Fraser Valley, Chilavak Outlets for admission, Maple Ridge as well, had a fairly heated meeting with the Minister of Environment, I can see him about this. So there's some political pressure being asserted in Campbell, which is also another big key, that's still, that's like that. So that's a bit of a segue, I know, a side issue for this, but it's still something that we've got to renovate. All right, any further discussion? Go ahead, Councillor Ken, then Bryce.
Yes, in regards to the increase in utility fees, you mentioned that what's recommended is no raise the flat rates for water and there'd be a slight raise for meter grades. Can you just walk through the logic of that in relation to the summer drought, and some might conclude maybe we're trying to encourage more meter rates?
Okay, so to understand where we're at with regard to our meter grade, you almost have to walk back six or eight years. And at that point in time, we figured out that we were actually charging our customers less than we were paying the regional district for water. So we're losing money with every 100 cubic feet, and at that point in time, the problem had arisen because we were still billing imperial units and buying our water in metric, in cubic meters. So we figured that out and we began to address the problem. And we not only want to recover the bulk rate of water, but we want to recover the full cost of water delivering to the customer, and that's somewhere over $1.20. Now, most of the customers that we bill by the meter are commercial, and so several years ago, council indicated to staff that it was fine with us moving towards full-cost recovery, but we'd rather see, we'd rather we avoid sharp shocks to the business sector. So we've been, for the last several years, marching the metered rate up by, by three cents. This year, we were at 99 cents, and our target is somewhere a little over $1.20. Okay? In terms of what it costs us to buy the bulk water and deliver it to the customers, assuming that there are system losses and that we have costs to maintain and repair and upgrade the system as a whole. Now, in terms of the flat fee, we have a situation this year where despite the fact that we received $327 from every household that was paying a flat fee, the same rate we've received for several years, overall, we use less water, and that was primarily because of stage three. Now, the metered customers have already taken advantage of that. Now, the metered customers have already taken advantage of that, because if their water use went down, they weren't paying as much in the summer as they might have in the previous year when they used more water. But the flat rate customers really haven't seen the benefits of that, and in terms of our bulk water this year, I'm estimating will be about a hundred thousand dollars under budget in terms of what we budgeted for buying water from the regional district and what we'll actually spend. And so, that amount of money can basically help us avoid having to bump the flat rates this year. The thing is, that was a one-time saving. And so, we can avoid this year's bump, but we still have scheduled increases to the flat rate in the future that will have to come. It basically puts off the pain one year.
All right. Counselor Price?
Yes, and my question was around that, and I think you've almost answered it. I guess it comes down to if somebody's on a metered rate, because we are, you know, trying to encourage people to move to a metered rate, well, there's advantages in doing that, and so, we don't want it to be that if this amount of water would actually be cheaper if we go for the bulk rate, is what I'm trying to say?
Absolutely.
At the flat rate, you know, that sense that metering saves you money, does that still factor in?
But you can't save money for all your customers, right? If someone uses five hundred cubic meters of water, and it costs us a dollar twenty to deliver it to the household, then that's six hundred dollars worth of water, right? You can't, you can't expect us to set a metered rate so low that they would save money over three twenty-seven, because their costing is more than three twenty-seven, right?
Because there's a lot of people costing, or some costing over, but there are, I'm sure, a lot of people who actually cost underneath that rate.
So, if you look at our median use, and remembering that we've got about eighteen hundred customers, we're getting close to half of the town is metered. So, at this point in time, we have about eighteen hundred meters on single-family homes, and the median use is somewhere below two hundred and fifty cubic meters a year, okay? So, if we're talking a metered rate of a dollar three or a dollar four, even if you took the whole monthly minimum of fourteen cubic meters, even if they had to pay from the first drop to the last, half of those customers would save money at a dollar four. Half of those customers would save money as opposed to paying three twenty-seven. Now, as it is, we charge a minimum fee of, I think it's seventeen fifty a month, it's a hundred eighty dollars, well, it's fifteen dollars a month, sorry, it used to be seventeen fifty, I'm getting myself... So, we charge them a hundred eighty dollars minimum a year, and then, we only charge them for water use if it exceeds fourteen cubic meters a month, that's a hundred sixty-eight. So, if you're in the two hundred twenty-five range, if you're in that median customer, right, you're paying for about sixty-five cubic meters, and you're paying the minimum. So, all told, okay, you'd be somewhere around two hundred forty-five, two hundred fifty dollars for the year if you were paying by the meter, as opposed to three twenty-seven if you were paying the flat rate. So, if you're a typical customer, and by typical, I mean, you're kind of halfway between the highest users and the lowest users, you can save money, even if we have a five cent increase, even if we several years from now end up with the rate at a dollar twenty or thereabouts. But, of course, by then, there will be increases to the flat rate as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for that. So, overall, the good news is instead of a forecast, a forty-five dollars increase for utilities for 2016 for water sewer and drainage, it's thirty-five dollars. So, something... All right, motion to approve the recommendation process in the council. Who's in favor? Any opposed? We're moving, the motion's been moved, we're just voting on it. Who's in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. So, we're all on the same page.
A little sidebar, see?
All right, so, now we'll move on to the report regarding the final design of the Marina Park. Phase one revitalization project, as you may recall, just last week, we had an update from the architect and consultant regarding the financial aspects and whatever thing for what we're proposing to spend. And so, the recommendation from staff is to receive the report and that we recommit the three hundred ninety-four nineteen, and funds allocated for the Canada One Fifty Act.
I'll move that.
Second.
All right, discussion on that. Go ahead.
I was just afraid that councilor Arnott, when, obviously, you can't be here, but in the email he sent out, expressing concern that there weren't going to be showers in the washroom. And are we definitely sure that's the case? Because I know that there was some conversation in the past, and it does seem to make sense if we could have a children's water park there, and kids playing, and... So, I just wonder, is the flexibility in design that if we could choose to incorporate even, you know, one shower each, now, you know?
With staff, you did that round.
The current design that the architect has would not have space for internal showers. We have discussed the notion of putting an exterior shower for those that quite want to wash the salt water off them, say, that they've been dumped in the ocean. But to operate and maintain shower facilities would be a larger burden for us, because they require daily cleaning and maintenance, and usually staff on hand at all times to deal with any issues that come up. And the, from my perspective, the potential that exists for us to benefit from the transient boating market is relatively limited. If you look at the transient boats plying our waters nowadays, you're looking at larger boats, thirty-two foot, thirty foot, and larger to the forty foot. For our Marina, that's less than half of the spaces that we have available at any given time. You may have, at most, have those spaces vacant and available for subletting or for transient mortgage. So, the cost benefit just wouldn't be there for us. And currently, if we're looking at attracting the transient boating market to the valley, that is essentially the bread and butter for the harbor authority as well as the Comox Bay Marina. So, we would be indirect competition for them, and really, we're not in a position to do that, and so the benefit from those showers would be minimal.
So, it'd be a staffing cost in addition to any capital costs. Counselor Grant?
Yeah, thanks. I got a little confused with the presentation last week, I guess, with where we were. I thought we had committed that money, so I'm glad to see we're recommitting it. But they talk about the water park and all of that stuff. Have we actually spoken to any of the service clubs? I know the Comox Rotary Club has shown some real keen interest in taking this on, as has the VIA has talked about something that could happen, and I'm still a little bit confused after the presentation last week as to, was it going to be like around three hundred thousand for a water park, or was it one fifty, or that all?
The very preliminary numbers that the architect perceived is that it would be possible to put a water park in the space that they kind of allocated for approximately a hundred fifty thousand. Now, this is for a straight run-through system, where you're not recirculating the water. If you want to recirculate that, you're basically operating a swimming pool and double that figure.
Yep.
You know, with additional operation and maintenance costs and top of that. So, we're, we've, on the very preliminary stages, budgeted that figure of a hundred fifty thousand, but not within the allocation that we're requesting.
So, I guess we haven't really seriously sat down and talked to those service clubs as to what they'd be willing to do on that?
No, we, from a staff perspective, we thought it was too preliminary until, A, the design was relatively complete, and there was direction received from council on whether we were going to proceed with the water park or not.
Okay, because I think the water park is a good idea. I then sort of questioned here, we have the plaza spray fountain for fifty thousand and the water park for a hundred and fifty, and it seems that we're going to go, do we need both? I mean, I know it's a nice feature, but perhaps we don't need both, so that was just my thought. And, I mean, I'm not sure how much money these groups would be willing to put towards getting this going, but, you know, in my opinion, it would be nice to see, I mean, I see that as being a really strong feature to this whole piece, and it would be nice to do it now if we could somehow figure out how to do that. So, I guess my suggestion would be that we get, talking to those people and see exactly where we stand on the money piece of it, and how much it would cost us to actually get involved in that.
Well, it's going to require a champion to take this on as a campaign, and we will, we will, in the design and in the construction, the plan is to include the underground works for it, so the plumbing for the water, for the drains, for the facility. But it's not necessary, or it doesn't have to go in until 2017. So, if the community was to get behind a campaign, a fundraising campaign to, you know, to raise whatever it is, the whole amount, a portion of the amount that council suggested, you know, that could occur for, over the next year and a half. I think that's a realistic timeframe to actually have a fundraising campaign for something like this.
Okay.
And so, that is the initial thought we've had.
Okay.
That it should be, it should be more of an organic kind of thing that spurs this on.
Yeah, so, I guess my other thought here or suggestion was about the spray fountain, and do we actually need a fifty thousand dollar spray fountain if we in fact like the idea of doing a water park? So, I just...
That's for...
I'd look for a comment on that.
If we have the money, it would be very attractive, but of course, it always comes down to that, doesn't it?
Like to have the water?
Is it better spent elsewhere, but having the fountain?
Well, the commitment that we're talking about making here tonight obviously doesn't include any of that.
Yeah.
So, it's possible, for example, I know that the VIA has forty-eight thousand dollars allocated from our budget for a capital project.
Yes.
Which they got to determine, and I guess when we were at the AGM, that was something that said, anyway, you guys want to do with that, and so that might work for something like that, but of course, it would depend on whether we're, like you say, doing a water park. It also occurred to me that for reoccupying the playground, there are elements of playgrounds and water parks that can work together, and they don't necessarily have to be separate, so, but that would be a design aspect, and we'd have to figure that out. So, there, I think what we're being asked to commit to tonight is sort of the base project with the Canada One Fifty application, which we committed prior to the election, and we weren't successful. I don't even know for a fact whether that program is over or not, but I suspect it's been probably fully subscribed. So, you know, I think that's what the consultants are looking for. These other aspects, we'll see how they play out, and the VIA's got some work to do. The last time I spoke to Rotary, two presidents ago, in fact, the current president, they still seem keen. Boys and Girls Club leadership's changed a bit, but I suspect they'll still be interested in it again, and it may be, so, it may be something that we'll have to figure out as we get closer to the finalized design and the tender, and see where those groups are at that point. And I know we'll be talking to various people from those organizations and see where their interests lie.
So, another thing that was brought up was the age of our current play area down there right now, and that it was due for renewal or upgrade anyway. I don't recall if we budgeted for that, or if that's in a budget anywhere, I mean, we think we're doing that anyway.
And your parks director can advise?
I can certainly speak to that, yes. I mean, it is on our rules plan, it's not identified within the capital budget as of this rate now. We've been doing and are addressing some of these components, component by component over the years, which we do carry a line item for. What I usually do is wait and, you know, allow time to engage service clubs to come in as a partner. Rotary is, historically speaking, been our biggest contributor to the Marina and the waterfront. The pavilions are an example, the playground structures are another example. There's other components, including the boardwalk and such, that Rotary's been directly involved with. So, just waiting to have that conversation, we'll move to this, into this next, what I'll call, design phase. It's probably a prudent time to do that. It's not like the structure is immediately going to fall apart, but it is susceptible and vulnerable to the salt air conditions, so, you know, we do assign lifespan to it, so...
I was hoping you were going to say we had about a hundred thousand dollars sitting in the budget there.
I carry a hundred and six thousand dollars per year for individual components to be swapped out, but, you know, I've just been approached by the Lions Club again, for example, one of our other key service club partners, they're looking for another project as well. So, I try to build upon that as the service clubs come forward. Sometimes I go after them, but I think, I think we have an opportunity here to, you know, working with Rotary, we'll find out where they're at and move forward to...
So, would you be taking the lead on that piece then, if we left it in your hands to look at the water park and the whole playground area, or?
I think I can definitely be assisted and be part of the conversation. I think it's pretty important that the architects are involved as well to a certain degree as we get further down the road. But, yeah, I'd be more than willing to be a point of contact from a staff perspective, for sure.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, just a comment on the water park in Palton, and Counselor Grant brought up some good points, but I know in the presentation that they touched briefly on how we can use a minimal amount of water in light of being very conscious of stage three water situations and possible continuance of post-drop conditions in our valley. And I think if we move forward, there has to be a real promotion of educating our public so that they're on side, that we're really being conservationists in that use of water, and that needs to be highlighted. We'd all like to see a water park there for our youth and kids, and, but the newest technology and using the least amount of water needs to be emphasized too. We can't lose sight of that, I think, particularly with these conditions that seem to be predicted for the future.
Yeah, well, we'll explore that as we get to design.
One of the options that the architect will be looking at is if we look at just a standard water park, the ability to catch some of that water and reuse it for irrigation purposes on the park, and the costs associated with doing that, we'll see. But it may be a way of, of, you know, getting a double use out of the water, and we just haven't got enough information on that.
I'm sure many communities are looking at those areas.
Yeah, we certainly want to make it clear to our community that we're looking at every avenue to use the least amount of water.
I mean, at this point, obviously, we're not making a commitment to even build a water park, it's just on the radar screen to consider. The project that we're directing staff to get final design and tender on is everything else.
I guess when I read Counselor Arnott's comments last night, and I, and he spoke to it last week, I was very disappointed that the shower piece had been set aside because, just because of the Marina rates that we've increased in the last number of years, and that was one of the concerns from the salmon community, that that was one of the amenities that we didn't already provide. So, but I also understand the cost and so on, and, you know, perhaps an outdoor shower would be a good compromise. So, if we could incorporate that somewhere, that might be...
Yeah, it doesn't sound like the capital of that would be significant, and certainly there's no staffing issue there.
No, including, so, I would still prefer to have it indoors, but if we can't do that, an outdoor one we could.
Or a key to your house.
Yeah, that's our half one again. That's our half one again.
Which, which house? All right, so I think staff are going to look into that. I think there's tremendous merit to do that, so. Anything further on the recommendation? So, votes in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. Any further direction required at this time? Any thinking regarding the water park? At this point, it would just be that it's an organic process.
Well, I'd just say it's time to engage some of those clubs and see how serious they really are on that piece.
Yeah, I think we need to be a little further along, quite frankly, to our budget process too. So perhaps sometime in that, you can look at it and then maybe send over a lot of expression of interest. Maybe we'll have heard from the PIA by that point. You know, we do have a 2016 capital budget discussion that we'll have to have, and maybe that's an opportune time to kind of say, okay, well, we'd like to do this. Do we have enough money even to commit something towards it with whatever other commitments we have? I mean, at this point, it's just a placeholder, so it might be better to wait to see what our overall budget looks like.
Well, I was happy to see it was, you could do something for a hundred and fifty because that's not an insurmountable number for some of these service clubs to actually take on. And perhaps we could have a much smaller piece of this than we originally.
Yeah, no, I agree. So yeah, we'll bring that forward. It'll be on the budget discussion for sure. All right, so moving on to the next item, which is the Pointon Pavilion project. Request for support. Staff brought that forward to us to support their project and also it authorizes spending up to a few thousand dollars to cover the costs associated with the foundation slide for the new pavilion.
Do you need that recommendation?
I think.
All right, and I assume that's to replace the one that's there right now?
That's correct.
We're going same spot or different spot?
Basically the same footprint, yes.
All right, so any further discussion, questions?
Just a very quick comment. I think this is a great partnership and I have to say and pass on to Al too, that I have received compliments on the washrooms down there, that people are very appreciative and they come back from a fishing trip and have a washroom there. He's very happy. So, yeah, so we were even going to write, one person was going to write some letter because they realize that very rarely did we get praised and.
You took that for an answer?
I did.
All votes in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. All right, development cost charges, draft report for information and discussion. So motion received.
Move receipt.
Thank you.
All votes in favor? Motion's carried. And are you doing a presentation, engineer? Where's your hard hat?
So, thank you for your worship and counsel. So it's something to do with free presentation on DCCs in general, some key items and as well some of the outcome of our DCC review.
In all the authority.
I think that was a good presentation. So, quick.
Shelley, don't hold the button. Just click on it. There we go. What are development cost charges? DCCs are money collected from the development to offset some of the infrastructure costs of the existing taxpayer. It's authorized under the local government act and is typically integrated with broader goals of the community, for example, our official community plan. The province also has best practices guides for DCCs and the best practices guide are based on six principles: Benefiter pays, fairness, equity, accountability, certainty and transparency. The technical report has to be coherent and has to be basically put out to the public and to all the interested parties, so it has to be consulted to part of it as well. The inspector municipalities could revoke the DCC by law if it's not as part of the best practices guide. DCCs are reported annually to the ministry. Purpose of DCCs and the DCC by law is to help finance capital projects related to infrastructure needs. For example, our roads, our storm systems, sanitary systems, our water and our parks. DCCs cannot be collected for maintenance and operation of our existing systems, but only for projects that accommodate growth and new development. For example, the expansion, alteration or construction of infrastructure needs. DCCs cannot be 100% funded by new development and therefore legislation requires a minimum assist factor of 1%. Assist factor is largely a political decision where most bylaws use an assist factor in the 1% to 10% range. They're also considered on a project specific basis. And for this report, we utilize a 1% as an assist factor across the board. How are DCCs calculated? DCCs are calculated based on capital works projects which are often identified in master plans and our studies along with the projected years that they're proposed that the construction would happen along with cost estimates for each of these capital works projects. You're also, you also review the projected growth over that timeframe. In this case, we're looking at a 10-year horizon. Assist factors and existing user benefit factors, which are based on usually percentages of those costs. Of the municipal services, DCCs can be applied. Roads are based on trip factors. Storm is based on impervious areas. Sanitary is based on equivalent population demands. Water is based on per capita demand and parks is based on population. Projected growth comes from the review of the town's official community plan, their historic data, DCC stats, as well as regional district official community plan, as well as the regional growth strategy. We have used the DCC stats growth projection data for this DCC review because they span the 10 years and have the most current information. So it's about a 1% to 1.2% projected growth over the next 10 years. The overview of the proposed rates. Land use categories have expanded from 6 to 14 to provide for better distribution and accountability across all users in a fair manner and that no one category is subsidizing another. One example is the commercial accommodation, which is now based on a per unit rate as opposed to the gross floor area. That's one of the new land use categories that we introduced. So an example of how those rates have changed, so if you're looking at a 28-room hotel, the new recommended rates would be forty eight thousand dollars DCCs as opposed to if it was charged on a per square meter gross floor area, you'd be looking at about eighty four thousand dollar DCC rate or cost. We also included a downtown commercial area component that better reflects council's support and direction on the downtown revitalization program. DCCs are not proposed for water or our storm as announced a fund presently in the reserve. Fund for each is sufficient for the estimated capital projects attributed to the new development. When I speak of the reserve funds, that is where the DCCs are deposited for each service and they must be spent within that reserve only. You can't switch them back and forth. Of the three services that DCCs are proposed, from the sanitary, parks and roads, both the sanitary and parks DCCs have reduced substantially of our current rates. The road DCC is what's increasing our overall costs for commercial and institutional. I'll explain that in the next few slides. The roads DCCs, that explains a little bit more detail of the impact and what staff have basically recommended in the report.
So, sorry, on that slide where you say a DCC proposed for my three services, you're talking about an increase to those. Are there's no DCCs for water and storm?
There is no DCCs proposed for water and storm, only DCC rates proposed for the sanitary, parks and roads.
We won't have a DCC for water and storm or?
No, because we have enough, the funds in our reserves are sufficient up to offset the capital costs.
We will for regional water.
Ah, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, two are roads DCCs, which is basically the only DCC rate that's going up. So I'm just basically showing the slide so I can highlight all the projects that was identified in our transportation study, which in the next 10 years was seventeen point eight million dollars. And that although the road DCC rates are higher than our existing road DCC rates currently, we're only considering capital infrastructure projects that total an estimated value of 2.4 million, which are basically the two intersection upgrades that we have identified. The other fourteen point two million dollar works will be borne by the existing taxpayers as these projects we anticipate completing regardless of development or current development. Saff also has allocated 5% existing user benefit factor to these calculations to further reduce the road DCC rates. Even though the projects are development driven, we feel that there's still a benefit to the existing users by upgrading the intersections and that's where we allocated the 5%. So I'll go through now the rates, basically our current, our proposed and do some, also some comparison of other municipalities as well. So I'll go through all the land use, most of the land use categories. So, as the CEO mentioned, we do have the CBRD DCC rates for our water and our sanitary because we're on a regional system for both those services. So they're highlighted in the darker blue and the lighter are just the municipal DCC rates. So most slides you'll have are comox current. They'll give you the total at the end. Our comox proposed, how that looks, and then a few of the other municipalities. The comparison rates, I just wanted to point out that although I have them listed and showing them as a comparison, it's really tough to compare apples to apples because we really don't know the background and their infrastructure needs and what's pushing the capital projects, how much money they have in their reserves, what their assist factor is, all those other factors that definitely have an impact on the outcome of what their DCC rates are going to be. So I just thought I'd point that out, but it gives you something to kind of feel and see where we're at. So for the proposed rate for the single family, we're actually reducing the rate from nine thousand seven hundred dollars per unit to five thousand eight hundred dollars per unit.
And the city of Courtney, not now, but we're looking at increasing their DCCs. Have they, is that the new one or do they have a perceived?
That's their current and I believe, yeah, I believe it was in May or June they had an open house on some proposed rates, but I'm not exactly sure.
And they're still not bringing them forward yet, like advisements, so it is our current.
I think those will probably go up.
And the multifamily, so all these will look the same. So currently the town has only one land use category for multifamily and this report further refines it to a low, a medium and a high multifamily. This was done again to provide for fairness and follows the province's best practices guide principles. For example, if you're looking at a 20-unit, three-story building, should they be paying the same storm DCC rates as a 20-unit patio home? Because the impervious area for each have very different impacts. So we looked at that, but with that said, you're probably going to see that the rates are the same and they are because we don't have any storm rates at this point. So in our next iteration, depending on capital works comes out of that, then you probably see the fluctuation. So that's why you're seeing for the proposed rates, the low, medium and high, they're all the same at this point and they're reduced from seven thousand two hundred per unit to four thousand two hundred. But with that said, we did again look at and introduce the downtown land use category. So that pushes down the multifamily high density in downtown further and reduce down it to four thousand as opposed to the four thousand two hundred for the areas outside downtown. The proposed rate for congregant care, intermediate care is reduced from three thousand down to two thousand one hundred seventy-five. Proposed rate for commercial is based on staff's recommendation to council to reduce the rate proposed in the report from a hundred and sixty-seven dollars to a hundred and five. This reduction again is based on staff's proposed amendment to the report for the roads DCC rates. Again, the water and the sanitary have no DCC rates and the sanitary DCCs have reduced dramatically. Commercial land use category does not pay for parks DCCs. So again, let's see here, so therefore the largest impact for the commercial is the roads because the other ones already went down or, or, or zero or not relevant for this land use category. So even though we have reduced the project to the two intersection upgrades, we're still seeing an increase due to the low projected growth for this category. However, the commercial downtown rate is further reduced from the proposed rate from the report from eighty-six dollars per gross floor area to fifty-five dollars. DCC is minus 11%. I have some examples on the next slide to basically show the impact of what those rates would be and how, because the commercial rates go up because the residential rates drop down so much that I was trying to give you an example of, say, a commercial and residential component or land use category development came in, what the total DCC rates would look like. And in the end, they'll still go down because the residential has gone down so much. So, so you'll see from this first table that the rates in the total DCC cost of a hundred and sixteen dollars and seven hundred thirty-four dollars was reduced to a hundred thousand dollars and nine hundred seventy-three. So basically when you mix the two, you're still seeing a reduction even though the commercial is going up. And again, if this exact example was put in within the downtown revitalization program because those rates have reduced, you'd be looking at the total rate for this entire development down to seventy-five thousand dollars.
You're just going to get to your next one and my question is, what is a 230-square-meter building look like? Like, what would that be?
Yeah, so this was basically provided to me by the planning department and it's similar to basically a quay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that for the, is that the top one you're talking about?
The top one, yeah. So the bottom, yeah, so the top one is basically, yeah, they're basically mimicking the same floor area development proposal for the quay. So it's the commercial and residential mixed use and the bottom one is just for a commercial. So that's basically using the same example as a ten-horse.
Okay, and so a bigger commercial would obviously pay a lot more. So that's, if you did a quality food, your cost would be quite a bit more, okay.
So when you mix it with the residential, it goes down because residential is so low, so it kind of balances it. Yeah, so that's the, so the commercial, just the last or the table at the bottom, which we just kind of discussed, is the example of just a standalone commercial where you don't have any residential combined with it and what that would look like and what that impact would be for that developer. So the comparison to the overall, in the comparison of the overall construction costs. So here, we're basically looking at additional ten thousand dollars on top of what they would have paid with our old DCC bylaws. So it kind of puts it in perspective because I also added on what the total construction value would be and it's point seven five million dollar construction value there. The proposed rate for institutional is based again on staff's recommendation to reduce the proposed rates from the report from seventy-four dollars to forty-eight. This reduction again is based on staff's proposed amendment to the report for the roads DCCs. Again, water and sanitary have zero DCCs carried and sanitary DCC has reduced dramatically. Therefore, the largest impact again were the road DCCs. An example on this one, I just basically put it on gross floor area. So if you're looking at a, say, just a hundred meter, square meter floor area, you're looking at additional two thousand dollars.
And what kind of building would that be then, like for institutional, like a school or?
Could be a school, hospital, churches.
Okay. We don't see any institutional buildings coming in the next 10 years. I think I read that in the report, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think that's basically, you're right, Council Grant, because the institutional and the commercial are basically seeing the higher rates because it has such a low, or low proposed development within those two land categories in the next 10 years. So when you have the cost, you can't spread it over a bigger area because it's such a small projected.
Right.
And then the proposed rates for industrial is reduced from a hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred per hectare down to thirty-three thousand per hectare. And that's basically it. Questions?
All right, questions, Mr. Council? Go ahead.
So I see this as being a really fairly positive report, actually. And if we're trying to get some activity in our downtown core or even some developments going on in our community, then this certainly puts us in a good light. Of course, that number of a 67% increase for commercial is a bit frightening. But when you look at the actual number, it's not that big a number. So I just want to be clear though that we're, that 67% increase we're talking about is basically just commercial that's outside of our downtown core that doesn't have accommodation above. Is that, so just a? of our downtown core that doesn't have accommodation above. Is that, so just like if a quality foods or something came in, that would be?
Yeah, that's right.
That's great.
And just to clarify, if I remember right, is this for five years, is it every five years?
It's based on, the projected timeframe is based on a 10-year. The best management practices basically say major amendments should be done every five years. And basically, if, yeah, if you have an official community plan, if you have more studies or more information that you can look at, and then a minor amendment, you can look at every one to two years. So it's kind of a revolving document, and, you know, it's hard to have a crystal ball and see what's going to be projected. And, you know, if we feel that we're on the wrong path and there's a lot more commercial, then we can again review those numbers and do a minor amendment as well.
Great. Very few things go down. It's a miracle.
But also reflects the focus on our downtown and infield development, existing infrastructure. In terms of the two intersections, I know you didn't say which ones they were, but you allocated an amount of 2.4 million. And I see staff are recommending that we have a 5 percent, I think that is, a suspect, is that right?
Benefit factor.
Benefit, whatever you call it. So that means you're saying that, you know, the development of the town would bear the brunt of that, but the taxpayers existing would bear some of it as opposed to the 1 percent that we've done in the past.
Correct.
So that presumably is, you know, maybe a couple of traffic circles or whatever you're doing with intersections. I know you have allocated specific ones, but maybe look, of course, at that one or at Dell, which is going to be funded primarily by DCCs, which should be funds to use. All right, so in terms of direction, what can you leave from us, CEO? Receive a public consult?
Yeah, if the committee is generally okay with what they've seen here and what Shelley has presented in terms of the modifications that staff are proposing to the report, we suggest making those changes and then taking that document to the development community through a meeting and soliciting feedback from members.
Okay. So do you need a motion to that effect?
That would be appreciated.
I would make the motion like what he just said.
And of course, as you are aware, there's that new organization, so maybe part of that.
Yes, we would contact them as well.
Right. All in favor?
I oppose. Motion is carried.
Thank you for that report.
Yes, very welcome. All right, so. So staff have, as we have put this forward as a pilot project or a trial project, staff are reporting back here at the end of October on the program that seemed to be quite successful for the Comox grant, and they're seeking further direction and renewal of that program and some considerations later. So staff could be directed as per the recommendations.
That would move that recommendation, both recommendations?
Didn't quite text the recommendations.
So, yeah, it's on page 127. So staff be directed to expand the trial parklet program into a permanent one in accordance with the Schedule I key processing steps. And that's, second recommendation is that the renewal for the Comox grant parklet be in accordance with that program. So that's been moved and seconded. And I think there was an issue, again, I think Counselor Natt raises soon as you know around whether or not condition number four, process incident number four, that the parklet be removed as of the beginning of November to the last Friday in January would be applicable. And this would be the only one we have right now, which is the Comox grant. So if we don't want that, then we could simply leave that.
Well, basement, oh, sorry.
I mean, I would be happy to see that removed, and we could do it through a trial period to see if there's any problems with permanent meaning all year round. I mean, I was just, first time I went there was a couple of weeks ago, and sitting out in October is pretty amazing. And the fact that when they had the little table and chairs outside, they were used all year round, I think it's worth seeing if we can actually keep it all year round. That would be my.
Yeah, Counselor McKinnon. For what it's worth, there was a gentleman sitting with a laptop outside today, and it's a first day over there. And my only question would be is if a small removal, would there be creating problems through the town? If not, then I'd be in support of it.
Well, the, oh, is it me or not? Yeah, the only other thing that I'm thinking about here, and I'm all for keeping it, but small removal was one, but we're having an incredibly mild winter or fall this year. If you make it permanent, you've got to think in terms of following years, and are we going to have the same sort of mildness and is it going to create some issues there? So, I mean, I'm good with it. I'm good with it certainly to leave it there because it's getting used a lot this year, but just I'm kind of mindful of the fact that we're having a fairly incredible weather season this year for that. So.
Do we know whether the proprietor wants to keep it there?
That's a fair question. Exactly.
Yeah.
We want it there. They want it there. I'm happy with having number four removed and giving it a trial because I think we have, it is wonderful to be able to sit outside on those days when it's sort of special in January and sunny. My only comment is, and it's given me a sense of irony, is the barricade beside the parking space by the parklet. I would be happier if it was a bit taller rather than just those little curves.
Taller.
The taller one. And I don't know what it is about that. It's just making me feel uneasy. And I don't know if it's practical or impractical, but that would be my only comment.
Are you, any in terms of that?
I'm still trying to figure out which.
Are you talking about?
The Long Island area.
Yeah, just, you know, it's just, yeah.
Heading west on Beaufort.
Yeah, where the cars do park there. And then there's the little curb piece or barricade. But if it was the taller version, I think it would be a little safer.
You think that somebody could drive over that one and?
Well, you know, sometimes people, they need to go backwards and they go and drive instead. And, you know, there's just a few things that can happen occasionally. That would be, that would be a real tragedy because I think it's wonderful to have that there.
Martin, go ahead.
Staff before you discussed experimenting with different things. So I know that Parks Department are looking at the, for the taller ones. Of course, you're more cost effective if you just buy something off the shelf. So you have to make larger ones. But in terms of planetary systems, that actually is very vulnerable. So those are things that we are actually looking at. And we can, what's nice about this program is we can experiment with them.
Go ahead, Counsel.
So the only other thing I just discussed with Richard here was if the owner decided they wanted to take it out for the winter and then bring it back, surely they don't have to go back and reapply and go through a whole process again. Once we've said it's okay to do it, there's some flexibility in that, I take it?
All right. So basically, the motion as presented would be amended to remove condition number four, step number four.
Yeah.
Everyone good with that? So all in favor with that amendment? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, staff, for bringing that forward to us in a timely fashion. Otherwise, you'd have to remove it really quick. Thank you, Counsel, for your discussion. Okay, so next is the draft watershed protection plan, and staff have provided a cover memo for this now. I don't know how many you went through the report itself, scanned it. Certainly, you have other questions as well on issues to cover them. So this motion received, the report and the memo is to receive.
Second.
All in favor? Motion is carried. So discussion.
I can tell you at the regional district, when this came up, many of the same concerns that staff brought up were there. There was quite a bit of discussion over some of the things that were considered to be high risk or not, and varying degrees of not agreeing with some of those. So I think that staff's recommendation of getting some more time and being able to look through this in a little more depth is probably a really wise move. There was, there was a lot of discussion and not many people really together with some of these recommendations. So I think that staff's recommendation at the bottom to give them some more time to come up with some of these answers is probably a good one.
So at the, as soon as it goes back to the Water Committee, they were the ones referring to us. When we sit there, is there some sense that November 6th is a flexible date?
That's a good question, Al.
I know that when the recommendation came to the Water Committee and it was, and we went to refer it rather than go through all the recommendations, it was to do with the budget process too because of bidding, starting to get this plan into budget process. So that, any discussion on that was deferred, but I guess that's always a consideration. But, I mean, some of the things are simple. I guess it's going through the ones that can be done right away, yeah, contentious ones. I mean, there's a huge amount in this report, and I think it's great that we have it, that we're actually looking at our watershed and the impact on the water and not just going, oh, well, we're probably going to do filtration and we can take all the bad stuff out. And the report really stresses that the purer your water when you get it at source, the better it is, the outcome. And so to really focus on a pure water supply. So, yeah, and they have gone into incredible detail on looking at the risks and mitigating factors. And it really is based on a lot of people working together too, with the forest companies and Cumberland and ourselves. But I think it is a good recommendation to go back to the working committee or the technical advisory committee and just looking at the practical aspects of what can we pull out, what can we move ahead, what can we start feeling into the budget process.
We had quite a bit of discussion too over how they rated some of these. Like, you'll notice that one of these aircraft accident at Comox Lake is rated high. Well, we've never had one, and.
The probability is very low.
The probability. So the way they actually rated some of these was kind of questionable too in some opinions as we sat there. So I think that's something to kind of keep in mind as you read through this and see some of them. And yet, as you say, some of them are kind of no brainers, but others are going to have a fairly big impact on people's lifestyle around the lake and what they do. So I think we need to tread very carefully on this.
Counselor McKinnon?
So I take it we're voting on for thoroughness, and thoroughness just got my vote.
Yeah, at this point, I guess what we're saying is that staff would like more time to review that. So would we just simply respond in that regard, saying that we need more time to review this?
Yeah.
Yeah, unless there's, you know, some real showstoppers here, I think this document will progress because as it points out, it was a requirement for operating permit from VHA to have a watershed protection plan in place. This, you know, is a draft, it's proceeding down the path. I think we struggled with it because some of it is, as I know, whether we're stuck with trying to think of how it can actually be implemented versus the recommendations themselves, I think is another challenge. But I think our technical advisory committee would like to have a look at it and see the impact. I think the important takeaway at this stage for counsel is that this is going to have an impact on the Water Committee budget because staffing alone is going to drive a lot of this. Because if you look at some of these recommendations and having somebody act as a coordinator to just look at what needs to be done in the watershed from a protection perspective is a weight of job in itself. But it's one of the necessary things I think we're going to be faced with.
Yeah, on top of many other things that we need for our water supply.
I saw somewhere in here there was a permit or something or extension of a date. Was it from Dave Cherry?
That was the VHA operated permit, yeah, scheduled date.
But that indicated that there was a deadline in that for September, but I assume that that's a bit of a moving target as well.
Well, it is somewhat in terms of the draft watershed protection plan is produced. They have a copy. They know that we're close. So I think that generally it satisfies or it's in the spirit of that permit, but it still needs.
It struck me in reading this. It was like deja vu all over again when I'd seen this kind of report 10 years ago with.
Phase one risk assessment.
Some more concerns about airplanes and terrorists. Now they refer to it as body contact recreation. I can't just say swimming. I don't know where they get these words from, but anyway, I thought people were playing rugby out there or something. But I thought a lot of the same issues were there. Still same, some of the same challenges with a watershed that is now, of course, totally fenced off and all by the water premieres.
And I think going back to staff, Bali staff will be good because there's a work plan I think that will come out with just things like the aircraft being high risk and crashing aircraft. I think that needs a little bit more investigation. D and D do their search and rescue with big helicopters over the lake, and the potential is always there for it to happen. And there's some good, you know, list of things, you know, check out. Is there a safer place to go? Can we go down the farthest end of the lake where there's least impact? What's the, is there an emergency plan? Probably is, but, you know, we need to know what it is. So it's sort of building a document. This is almost like a, there's a work plan within this too, which, there's a lot of work.
Yeah, and of course, subject to whatever infrastructure projects are done in terms of UV or filtration, so on, some of those risks are mitigated. So refer back to staff for further consideration would be in order. Move that?
Second.
All in favor? Motion is carried. Yeah, the deadline, I just found Dave Cherry's letter just talks about September 15th. But again, I guess just to keep expecting that is carried on. Okay, so we now are at Mount Mayor Avian Rescue Society request for letter of support and funding.
We'll move the two recommendations.
Thank you.
Okay. So certainly don't have any issue myself with the first one. Has to consider it as part of my role at the Island Coast Economic Trust. The second one, I'm not so sure we should necessarily refer to budget because I don't think we would be able to fund them unless we started adding to our, or changing our no grants and aid policy. It might be better to let them know that now rather than later. So I'm not sure that we should even refer it to budget. There was another request recently that came along to the Navy League, and I just asked staff to send them a letter to say, but we can't fund that. I mean, if you start even considering some of these things, they're going to be on the list.
Both of them are canned or arms.
So that'd be my only comment on that.
So do you want me to change my motion to just number one instead of the two?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll do that.
I'll second that.
Okay. So on the letter of support, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. And the second one that we simply advised on the no grants and aid policy.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor? Motion is carried. All right. BC 55-plus games, which used to be called the seniors games.
I don't like this 55-plus.
One more week.
Yeah, not even. I don't like that.
So I think Counselor McKinnon asked that information to be brought forward. So I'll turn it over.
Very briefly, as I am a senior, it's nice to recognize people in our community. And we have nine winners of medals in the recent games. I'd like to propose that Mayor and Council sent a letter of congratulations to all nine medalists here from our community. And I'd be prepared to work with Lo and get any addresses to her.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So it's been moved, seconded?
Second.
All in favor? Motion is carried.
I have the names here if anybody's interested in these names.
Well, they're on the agenda. All right, so we'll move on to the next item. And Counselor McKinnon, thank you. And Counselor McKinnon, thank you.
I'm going to declare a conflict here and my problem is I have too many sons.
So you don't necessarily have to come back. I think that's.
You just wanted to get over here.
You could just go that way. All right, so the McKinnon brothers have proposed a proposal to partner with various groups here, including the town, in terms of rehabilitation of that basketball court. So much pleasure.
I would move receive and that we would refer that to budget. Would that be appropriate?
You can, yes, you can refer it to budget. There's, I think it's a two-part request. One is looking for the letter of support similar to the pickleball association request to go to the community foundation.
Yeah, fair enough. So, yeah.
And I think, yeah.
Okay, so a motion to provide a little support, we'll deal with that first.
I'll move that.
Okay. And all is a favor? Motion's carried. And in terms of the financial request, could we refer this to budget? We could. Is there a timing issue on this at all?
That's what we have out here.
Yeah, sure. Director of Parks, what do you think about this?
Is there DCCs on this?
I think it's a fabulous project. I mean, anytime that we can look at point 25 cent dollars, I'm all in for it, so.
Find 2,500 bucks somewhere without?
We could find 25, I think, but realistically, we're not going to be able to do any asphalt overlays or line painting, you know, well into the spring now. So unless the McKinnons are thinking something differently, I don't think we're in a huge rush. So I think we could probably include it and vet it through the normal budget cycle in time.
All right. So motion to refer it to budget, that information.
All right, so I made that motion already.
Excellent.
Second.
All is a favor? Motion's carried.
Let's not tell you.
Yeah, we'll leave it. So a motion to.
Motion's adjourned.
All is a favor? Motion's carried.